Good evening, I'm Dan Swenson, Chief of the Regulatory Branch, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Baltimore District. On behalf of the Corps of Engineers, I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing. Before we get started, I'd like to explain how this hearing will be conducted. This public hearing will be conducted exclusively on WebEx. Instructions for the WebEx can be found in the public notice, which is posted to the Corps Baltimore District website. Now I'd like to explain a little bit about the role of the Corps in this process. Under our federal permit program, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is responsible for regulating the discharge of dredged or fill material into waters in the United States under Section 404 of the Clean Water Act. Under this law and other federal resource-related statutes, the Corps evaluates potential impacts that would be caused by the proposed project prior to making a permit decision. In addition to evaluating the environmental direct, indirect, and cumulative impacts of the proposed project, the Corps must determine whether the proposed project is the least environmentally damaging practicable alternative that meets the overall project purpose. In addition, no permit can be granted if we find that the proposal is contrary to the public interest. The public interest determination requires a careful weighing of those factors relevant to the particular project. The project's benefits must be balanced against its reasonably foreseeable detriments. In meeting our regulatory responsibility, the Corps is neither a project proponent nor an opponent. As you know, Howard County has applied to my agency for permits to construct several flood mitigation projects within waters of the U.S. in Elicott City. The county has applied for a regulatory Section 404 permit. While we will be evaluating this permit application, the proposed project is not a Corps proposal. We are here in a permitting context only. The purpose of this public hearing is to gather comments regarding the proposed project from the general public. We will carefully consider all comments prior to making our final permit decision. And even following this meeting, the public has until September 25th, 2020, as indicated in the public notice, to provide written comments, which will also become part of the record for this project. Please note, we will equally weigh comments provided verbally or in written format. I'll now turn it over to Bill Seeger with the Maryland Department of the Environment.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening, everyone. My name is William Seeger, and I'm Chief of the Waterway Construction Division at the Maryland Department of the Environment, or for the rest of my speech, the Department. I am the panelist representing the Maryland Department of the Environment at this public informational hearing for the Elicott City Flood Mitigation Project's Joint Permit Application and Water Quality Certification. Also in attendance, virtually from the Department, is Ms. Deborah Coria, Senior Regulatory and Compliance Engineer and the Project Manager for this project. The Department of the Environment appreciates both your interest and participation in the public comment process. It is the responsibility of the Department to evaluate applications that propose impacts to non-titled wetlands, the non-titled wetland buffer, and waterways, including the 100-year non-tidal floodplain. The Department's authority is found in Subtitles 5 and 9 of the Environment article. Each application received through our regulatory program has specific and unique issues and impacts that must be considered in relation to weighing the potential benefits and detriments of the project. The Department is neither a proponent nor opponent of any project. This public informational hearing is being conducted pursuant to subsection 5-204 of the Environment Article and Code of Maryland Regulations 2623-0202, 2617-0413, and 2608-0210. The purpose of this public informational hearing is to provide the applicant with an opportunity to present an analysis of impacts that may be associated with the proposed activity. In addition, the hearing provides the Department with an opportunity to solicit additional information from interested persons. This public informational hearing is for non-titled wetlands and waterways permit application number 19-nT-3250/2019-61647/20-WQC-0033, submitted by the Howard County Government Stormwater Management Division. The intent of the project is to provide improved conveyance for large storm events meant to reduce the potential of flooding in Elicott City. The projects include floodplain grading, channel stabilization, channel dredging, construction of conveyance structures, and additional culverts for bypass of high flows, along with the removal of existing channel restrictions that are currently reducing channel capacity. The project will permanently impact 3,515 linear feet, or 54,914 square feet of stream channel, and 343,085 square feet of the 100-year non-tidal floodplain. Please note that the Department's decision on the permit application and accompanying information will be sent to the interested persons list, as well as to the applicant. The Department's decision will be a final agency determination, and there will be no further opportunity for administrative review. Any person withstanding who is either the applicant, or who participated in the public participation process through the submission of written or oral comments, may petition for judicial review in Circuit Court. The petition for judicial review must be filed within 30 days of the publication of the Department's permit decision. At this time, I would like to turn the proceedings back over to Mr. Swenson. Thank you.
And I, in turn, will turn this over to Howard County Executive, Dr. Calvin Ball, who will provide a brief introduction.
Good evening. I'm Calvin Ball, your Howard County Executive, and thank you for joining us. Protecting and promoting Elicott City has always been a top priority. Within three weeks of taking office, I announced the first phase of our Elicott City Safe and Sound Plan. This holistic plan is centered around public safety, supporting businesses and property owners, and preserving as much of the town's historic charm as possible. As part of the Safe and Sound Plan, we have already instituted several public safety measures, including an outdoor emergency tone alert system and high-ground access points and gates. Additionally, we launched a flood mitigation assistance grant program to help property owners and businesses complete resilience projects on their structures and bridges. And to help keep our culverts free of dangerous debris, we have cleaned more than 28 tons of debris from the streams in and around Elicott City since January of 2019. In May of 2019, after an extensive public comment process, I announced our flood mitigation plan. The plan includes a mix of both retention and conveyance projects, some of which were already in the design process. This plan preserves six of the 10 buildings previously scheduled for removal under the previous plan. My team has been working incredibly hard over the last 20 months to move these projects along, and we expect to start construction on these five projects within the next 18 months. Before we can begin construction, however, we are required to obtain a permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the Maryland Department of the Environment. The process of obtaining that permit includes a review of the potential impact to historic resources, which is a critical part of tonight's hearing. After delays amid this unprecedented global health crisis, I am very glad we've gotten to this point in the process, and I thank the Corps and MDE for their dedication. Thank you all for being here and your interest. Thank you for sharing your thoughts, and thank you for your continued dedication to Elicott City. Now, I would like to turn it over to Mark Richman from the Howard County Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Dr. Ball. My name is Mark Richman. I'm the Chief of the County Stormwater Management Division. It is important to note that the subject of this public hearing is the Joint Permit Application for seven specific projects relative to flood mitigation for Elicott City. The projects subject to this evening's public hearing are as follows. 8777 Frederick Road Culvert Improvement Project, which will increase the capacity of the existing roadway culvert to convey additional flow under the road. 8600 Frederick Road High Flow Bypass Pipe Project, which will increase the capacity of the existing culvert to convey additional flow under the road. 8552 Main Street Flood Berm, 8534 Main Street High Flow Bypass Pipe Project. This project will create an earthen berm and increase the capacity of the existing culvert, respectively, to collectively reduce large flood flows on Main Street. The Lower Main Street Channel Constriction Removal Project, which will remove the rear portions of six existing buildings to increase the capacity of the Tiber Branch to safely convey large storm events. The six buildings include 8081 Main Street, the deck only; 8085-8089 Main Street; 8095-8101 Main Street, this is the first floor only; 8109-8111-8113 Main Street; and 8125 Main Street. The next project is the Lower Main Street Terrace Floodplain Project, which will completely remove four existing buildings at the lower end of Main Street. This is 8069, 8059, 8055, and 8049 Main Street. This will increase the capacity of the Tiber Branch to safely convey large storm events and is needed for the Maryland Avenue Culvert Project. The Maryland Avenue High Flow Bypass Culvert Project, which will construct new culverts from Maryland Avenue to the Patapsco River to increase flow capacity under the CSX Railroad. And finally, the North Tunnel Project, which will construct a tunnel approximately 1,600 feet long and 15 feet in diameter, from approximately Parking Lot F to the Patapsco River, including a portion under the CSX Railroad. I will now turn things back to Dan Swenson to begin the public testimony.
Thank you, Dr. Ball and Mr. Richman. We will now begin with public testimony. Pre-registered speakers will be called upon to speak first. After all pre-registered speakers have spoken, non-registered speakers may speak during the open session by using the hand raise feature according to the instructions included in the public notice. Individual speakers will be given two minutes, and those representing an organization will be given five minutes to make comments. Please note that only one speaker may speak on behalf of an organization. All comments will be documented, and a countdown timer will be viewable on the screen, in addition to the sign language interpreter. Speakers must conclude comments when time has expired. Any remaining time cannot be donated to another speaker. I appreciate your cooperation in keeping to your allocated time so the meeting runs smoothly, and we can hear all the people who wish to speak. The purpose of the public hearing is to gather information from the public to assist us in making a permit decision. Therefore, there will be no question-and-answer session. Speakers must first state and spell your name, address, and the organization that you are representing, if applicable. You will only be given the opportunity to provide oral comments. Video will not be enabled for individuals providing testimony. Presentations, displays, and posters will not be permitted during the public hearing. However, any supporting information may be submitted with written comments. Written comments are given equal weight to verbal comments. If you have not concluded your comments within two minutes, or would like to submit additional comments with supporting information, those comments must be submitted to the Corps and MDE in writing before September 25th, 2020, as outlined in the public notice. If time remains after all speakers have concluded public testimony, you may be able to provide additional testimony. If you are having technical issues, please use the chat feature. Please do not provide testimony and comments through the chat feature, as they will not be considered in the official record. Instructions on how to use the chat feature are also included in the public notice. In addition, if you lose connection during the WebEx public hearing, please refer to the access instructions provided in the public notice. All oral or written testimony will become part of the administrative record for this permit application. After the public hearing has concluded, a transcript of the public testimony will be available at the link provided in the public notice at a later date. You may contact the Corps and request that a paper copy be mailed to you. Before we begin, would Howard County like to provide any additional WebEx instructions or clarification?
Thank you, and good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining our WebEx event. Very good at reviewing the upcoming housekeeping rules. Just a couple of points to note that this meeting is being recorded, and also live-streamed on the Elicott City Safe and Sound Facebook page. In addition, the persons that have registered ahead of time will speak first, followed by those who have joined and not pre-registered. You will have an opportunity to do so at that time by clicking the Raise Hand button. To access the Raise Hand button, if you click on the Participants button in the lower right-hand corner, it will bring up the list of participants, and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a symbol of a hand. Clicking that symbol will raise the hand. Clicking the symbol again will remove the hand. When the person is called to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will state your identity. And if you are speaking as a group or individual, you will be given two minutes for an individual and five minutes for the group. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. Before we get started, this public hearing is scheduled until 9:00 p.m. I will begin by calling up the first pre-registered speaker, and I believe our only pre-registered speaker. If you're the speaker, your audio will be unmuted, as you just heard. For those wishing to speak, when your turn comes, please state and spell your name, so that the stenographer can clearly add that to the record. State your address and the organization that you are speaking for, if applicable. And please remember that you have two minutes as an individual, and five minutes if you're speaking on behalf of an organization. Finally, when we take testimony from you, speak clearly and slowly, so the stenographer is able to hear and transcribe everything that you say. And with that, let's go to our first pre-registered speaker. The first speaker is Steve Wachs, and Steve will have five minutes to speak on behalf of the Patapsco Heritage Greenway, otherwise known as the Patapsco Valley Heritage Area.
Thank you, Mr. Ball and Ms. Coria, for this opportunity to publicly comment. My name is Steve Wachs, W-A-C-H-S. I live in 5852 Deer Ridge Lane in Elk Ridge, and I am the Board President of the Patapsco Heritage Greenway. As you said, the managing entity of the Patapsco Valley Heritage Area. Elicott City and the entirety of this flood mitigation project are within the boundaries of the Patapsco Valley Heritage Area. PHG, as a nonprofit organization, works to preserve, protect, interpret, and restore the environment, history, and culture of the Patapsco Valley Heritage Area. We have a board made up of dedicated residents and a larger team of equally dedicated members and volunteers who love the valley, its history, charm, and beauty. We appreciate the opportunity to participate in the Section 106 review process through Representatives Ms. Jensen-Wingate and Ms. Kabatczek. They prepared a detailed written report with recommendations that was reviewed and approved by the PHB Board, which is being submitted as written testimony. I wish, just to summarize the written report while stressing points of emphasis, we understand and support the need for public safety and want residents, shop owners, and visitors to feel confident when they are in Elicott City. Elicott City's evolution from early mill town to today's charming, unique point of destination for strolling, shopping, and entertainment is captured in an architectural style spanning hundreds of years. It is important, we feel, to retain this history, either by retaining the architectural evidence in the buildings, or by at least providing contextual evidence for interpretation. Specifically, in the Lower Main Street, we think additional mitigation for the structures at 8049, 8055, 8059, and 8069 is warranted. While their removal may be necessary for public safety, such action will radically alter the character of the Lower Main. Our report recommends specific suggestions for maintaining evidence of their existence, their place in history, and provides areas of public interest. We request consideration for preserving as much as possible of the historic stone Tiber Channel walls, as representative of the early 19th-century milling industry stonework. While not mentioned in the public notice, the steel bridge adjacent to 8069 Main Street appears eligible for the National Register Criterion C. We request these be evaluated and documented for retention. We support preserving the sandstone storefront facade of 8059 Main Street, also known as Bean Hollow, in situ, to define the edge of the street scape and preserve an iconic architectural relic from Elicott City's past, as well as the retention of the historical front sections of buildings higher up Main Street, various addresses from 8081 to 8125. Hopefully, these future uses and occupancy will be allowed. Finally, our report highlights the structure at 8777 Frederick Road in the West End, a 19th-century structure worthy of consideration for relocation instead of demolition. We request a full evaluation and documentation for national register eligibility due to its construction style from locally quarried stone. We request full documentation on all these affected properties be available for public access. Patapsco Heritage Greenway is prepared to work with other consulting parties to generate a memorandum of agreement in an effort to minimize the adverse impacts of the flood mitigation plans to the iconic Elicott City Historic District. Thank you again for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Wachs. Now we have an opportunity for additional non-registered speakers. In order to speak, please use your hand raise button on the WebEx screen. I will then call on those individuals with their hand raise button clicked. And as a reminder, once you're finished speaking, please remember to unclick your hand raise Our next speaker will be Joel Hurwitz. You have two minutes to speak.
Yes, we can hear you. First, for the county deficient in publicizing this, it's not on your event list or highlighted on the news or events of the Safe and Sound. When the prior Kittleman-Bynstein plan expressed removal of the 10 buildings, I had written a blog about how it could preserve the facades and put in a flood wall and keep the water off of Main Street, and the Safe and Sound Plan does that in large respects for the six upper buildings. However, I'm opposed to the removal of 8049, the Phoenix Building. The county's plans always show the concept plan looking from Maryland Avenue. They never show the reverse of what the culvert's going to look like, how it's going to keep debris out, how you're going to keep people out but let the water in, what the effect of the air blowing through it is going to be on the use, and how to keep the BNO protected when the buildings and the bridges are removed. Instead, your concept plan in the Watership Master Plan actually shows a deck over the Phoenix, where the Phoenix is currently over the Tiber. I do not understand why the Phoenix portion that's over the Tiber is anyway impacted by the culvert construction, and the county has never apparently explained that. So I would like to preserve as much of the Phoenix as possible, particularly because it has a historic marker on it. I recognize that the elevations to get under the road and the railroad don't give you a lot of room for the other portion of Phoenix, but as much as it should be preserved as possible, because it frames the building, the street scape, as the previous speaker said. I also...
Time has expired.
...support the eastern and southern preservation.
We have your name spelled out on the WebEx. Would you like to state your address for the record?
5681 Unit C, Harpers Farm Road, Columbia 21044.
We now have an opportunity for another speaker. I'm looking at the list of attendees. I don't currently see anybody else with their hand raise button clicked. If you would like to speak, please go ahead and click your hand raise button, and you'll All right, our next speaker will be Stephanie ErmaKinger, if I'm pronouncing that right. Stephanie, are you speaking on behalf of just yourself or an organization? If you guys could unmute her, that'd be great.
She is unmuted.
Stephanie, are you speaking on behalf of a group? Okay, well, maybe we can come back to Stephanie. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? If so, please click your hand raise button, and we'll have you start your time. And just to put it out there, I do see Stephanie's, she's currently muted.
Yes, she was unmuted.
Maybe we'll keep her unmuted.
Yes, I can keep her unmuted. And Stephanie, if you'd like, you could just call in. We will unmute the call-in.
Okay, well, I'm not, let's just go through this one more time. If there is anybody else who would like to speak, if you could click the hand raise button using the WebEx, we'll wait one more minute for that, and then we'll try unmuting all, just to see if anybody else would like to speak. We do have a hand raised by Brent Lovelace. Brent, can you tell me if you're speaking on behalf of a group?
I am currently the President of the PTA Council of Howard County. However, I will be speaking as an individual.
Great, okay, well, you'll have two minutes to speak then, and if you don't mind, please just restate your name, spell it out, and if you'd like to state your address, that would be great.
My name is Brent Lovelace, 9570 Whiskey Bottom Road, Laurel, Maryland. I apologize, I did not come prepared to speak this evening, but this is an item of great importance. My family has been in the region for many, many, many generations, and although we are mainly from... mainly focused around the Laurel area, Eloquent City is equally important to us from a historical perspective. And I would appreciate any and all efforts to use your engineering skills to try to maximize the historic preservation of the region. And I do think that with enough time, effort, energy, that we can work toward engineering solutions and hydrology solutions which minimize the impact to the historic character. As a school representative, I am always at odds between things that compete for funding, education versus things like flood mitigation, safety, and historic preservation. But I do think each of these are extremely important to the character of the community and what we leave for future generations. And I encourage, like I said, any and all efforts that we can to implement hydrology controls that minimize the impact to the historic character of the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. So is there anybody else who wishes to speak? If so, please click that hand raise button, and you will be able to take your turn speaking. And I don't know if we have Stephanie, I don't know if we have Stephanie Ermatinger back on the line. If so, Stephanie, you could speak now.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
This is Stephanie Ermatinger.
Stephanie, are you speaking on behalf of a group?
I'm sorry?
Are you speaking on behalf of a group?
A group, yes. My name is Stephanie Ermatinger. Last name is spelled E-R-M-A-T-I-N-G-E-R. I am the Executive Assistant for Eloquent City Partnership. Eloquent City Partnership works with the business owners in order to preserve the heritage of Eloquent City, of Old Eloquent City. Removing some of the buildings, I believe, are going to disrupt a lot of the business owners down there. Eloquent City is just a historic district, and it needs to stay a historic district. Cutting off some of the backs of the buildings, I believe, are going to interfere with the business owners' actual production for business. I can understand construction, and I can understand renovations. I just hope that it is not going to interfere with a lot of the business owners, their retail businesses. They've been so much affected by the pandemic itself. We've been trying to get as much grant money as we can to help any of the businesses and all the businesses. And we certainly would welcome any and all information that anyone can provide in order to help maintain the history of Old Eloquent City. I thank you for allowing me to speak at this moratorium, and if anyone has any questions, feel free to contact me.
Thank you, Mrs. Ermatinger. Would anyone else like to speak at this point? Okay, well, why don't we, I'm not seeing any further hand raises on the WebEx. Just one last opportunity, if you'd like to click that hand raise button. I'll go ahead and just wait just a little bit, see if anybody wants to do that. Okay, at this point, why don't we go ahead, our Howard County IT folks, if you could unmute all the phone lines, we'll see if we can have anybody who wishes to speak but couldn't figure out the hand raise feature, and give them an opportunity to speak as well. When we do this, if folks could, if there are people who do want to speak, if we can just sort of go one at a time, that would be great.
Okay, I'm going to unmute them right now. Looks like we're getting some feedback. Give me a moment.
I guess as an alternative, while we're working on that, if there is anybody who wishes to speak but couldn't get the hand raise feature to work, why don't you let our IT folks know through the chat function? That's another way you can let them know that you wish to speak, and we can make that happen. Right, even if we go one at a time, that's probably doable with the number of people that we have.
Okay.
However you want to do that.
So I'm going to unmute the people with their first names that begin with B and E.
So for the folks who are unmuted right now, if you'd like to speak, please, one at a time, feel free to do that.
So they would be the first letter of their name, begins with a B and ends with an E.
Why don't we just go down one by one? Maybe just keep it simple.
Okay. All right, I'm going to unmute James. Okay, I'm going to unmute Joel. All right, I'm going to unmute Giulio.
And as people are unmuted, if you'd like to speak, please just speak up, state your name, address, and you can have that opportunity.
I'm mute Keith.
I have no comments.
Thank you. I'm going to unmute Kristy. Okay, Elle Wingate. I'm going to unmute Lisa.
I have nothing, thank you.
I do. I'm going to unmute Liz. I'm meeting Nancy.
No comment.
Thank you. I'm meeting Nicole. I'm meeting Pat. I'm meeting Robert.
Good evening, I have no comments, thank you.
Thank you. I'm meeting Scott.
I have no comments, thank you.
I do.
Already spoke, thank you.
Thank you. I'm meeting Travis.
No further comment, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm meeting WM Hiddle.
No comment, thank you.
Thank you. That is all of them.
All right, thank you for that. Well, I think at this point, we're ready for closing remarks unless anybody, I guess, has one last opportunity before we move on to that. And I guess another question is, do we want to continue the meeting in case other participants decide to join, or do we want to move on to closing remarks? Mr. Bull, let me know if you have any advice on that decision.
Yeah, I think we can continue the meeting until nine o'clock in case other participants join. Other than that, we can place the meeting in recess if there are no additional comments at this time.
Bill Seager and county folks, you in agreement with that plan, or do you have other suggestions?
No, this is Bill. Sounds like a plan to me.
That's fine from the county's standpoint.
What I could do is go ahead and read those closing remarks, just to reiterate some of the commenting deadlines, and then I could repeat that at nine o'clock when we close the meeting.
Hello, can everybody hear me? Hi, this is Christopher Pineda. I'm the new executive of the Eloquent City Partnership. I just wanted to state for the record that the Eloquent City Partnership has not created a formal policy or statement on behalf of the plan, and if anything will come out on behalf of the organization, it will be drafted and sent to the County Execs Office in a That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Well, this is Dan Swenson again. I'm going to go ahead and just read those, I'm just going to go ahead and read my closing remarks, and then I'll repeat those again at the formal end of the meeting at nine. But just that, if any of the folks that are on the line wish to drop off the call, I'm just going to repeat this. On behalf of all of us with the Core and MDE, we would like to thank you for your participation in this public hearing. Your comments are important to us, and we will review them carefully to ensure our final decision accurately evaluates the project alternatives and their environmental impacts. Again, the Core and MDE will carefully consider all comments provided at this public hearing for the proposed project as part of our final permit decision. As another reminder, if you would like to provide additional comments, the close of the public comment period is September 25, 2020. Comments must be received by September 25, 2020 to be considered in the Core's evaluation of the proposed project. In addition, the transcript from this public hearing will be posted to the link provided in the public notice. You may also request a public copy, I'm sorry, a paper copy of the public notice and/or transcript by sending a request via email to Mr. Donald Bull at, and I'll spell out his email address, it's D-O-N-A-L-D dot R, as in Robert, dot B-O-L-E, and that's at U-S-A-C-E dot A-R-M-Y dot M-I-L, or by calling 410-962-6079. Thank you and have a good evening. And like I said before, we're going to remain here at the meeting until nine o'clock, and I'll repeat these closing remarks at the very end. If anybody would like to speak at this time, please let us know.
Dan, this is Greg. Is there a certain time that you want us to reconvene to follow up with any additional people wish to give testimony?
I think that, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, but I think the plan is for us to stay on, sort of keep all channels open for the next hour and 15 minutes or so. But if anybody has a different plan, please feel free to make suggestions.
So I was suggesting that if we wanted to, you know, we come back and at 8:30, the meeting will continue to run, people will continue to join, and if we want to check with anybody around that time to see if there was any additional testimony, or we can do whatever you like.
I mean, I think it'd be better to have people on the line, you know, if people do join the meeting and there's nobody to respond to them, they may conclude that the meeting has ended prematurely, dropped off. So I don't think everybody in the meeting needs to stay on, but I think for the Core, we'll just continue to be on the line until nine o'clock.
I like the idea of giving it a rest and coming back, but unless there's some direction for folks who will be joining now to instruct them that we're coming back, I don't know how we can do anything but sit and wait for a hand to be raised or a new person to speak up.
So I have a PowerPoint slide that states that we are in recess and that we will be returning. So if you'd like, I can have it as is, or we could put a time to state when we are returning to follow up with any additional testimony.
Didn't know you had that. That sounds like a good idea.
This is Dan Swenson, I'm okay with that. Joe, Don, or Katie, any objection to that?
That sounds good to me. We can put the in recess slide up and then check back at, let's say, 8:15.
Why don't we make it 8:30?
That sounds good to me.
Thank you, I will be putting up the slide momentarily, and we will go on you.
Sounds good, thank you very much, and thanks to all the folks that joined us for this Hi, this is Dan Swenson with the US Army Corps of Engineers. Welcome to this public hearing. We've been in recess. If you'd like to speak... If you'd like to speak, please click on your raise hand button in your WebEx application.
And for those that have just joined, to raise your hand, if you click on the participants icon in the lower right-hand corner, you will see a raised hand at the bottom of the participation list. You just click that once, raise the hand, click it again will remove the raised hand.
So it seems like we don't have any new raises currently, I suggest we wait about five minutes and then if, if everybody's in agreement, we could go on recess again until just before 9 o'clock, give it one more chance and then end the hearing. Looks like we do have one hand raised. Mr. Brent Lovelace.
Hello, I, I spoke earlier and thank you for the opportunity and I wanted to make sure everyone else had the opportunity before speaking. After thinking about the comments I made earlier, I would like to reiterate, I was involved in a very important project in Lower Howard County involving a national historic site. And each and every year, we requested signatures to see how many people actually cared and were concerned about the historical resources in that area of the county. We did this for about seven years and each and every event that we had where we went out to the people and requested their comments and thoughts on it, we were getting 99, 99.5% support for preserving historic resources in Howard County. The differences is from this meeting tonight is we went to the people and gave them the option as opposed to sending out an invite and hoping they could join. I'm rather disappointed with the turnout here, but I think it's indicative of the situation with the county where its school is starting, it's very busy, it's about to rain. There are multiple meetings going on and even there is a meeting on this very topic tomorrow which may confuse people. So I can only offer my experience from elsewhere in the county, but I do believe most of the county is very concerned about the historic resources if given the opportunity to chime in. And I also believe they are very concerned about the safety and well-being of the residents of Howard County and Ellicott City. And as a storm approaches yet once again in Ellicott City, it's a good time to remind everyone that our risk to life is based mainly on occupancy of the buildings. Our timing of this project is urgent to protect life, but we can obviously address that concern through occupancy and address the long-term project of mitigating this floodwater over the period required where it is least impactful and most effective. And I encourage yet once again to explore any and all alternatives, phasing and methodologies to both protect life and preserve our heritage. And I think we can through, through phases, engineer the best solution possible. So I encourage you to shoot for the moon and try to, try to create a project that will be recognized throughout the nation and the world for preserving historic resources and environmental issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. And just to, just to make the suggestion, if there's anybody who would like to, would, who spoke previously but would like to speak again, looks like we have the time to do that, so if you do, just, just use that hand raise function and we can have you, provide you with additional time to speak.
We have a hand raised. Dan, we have a hand raised.
Yeah, hi, sorry, I was on mute. We have Mr. Martin Evler, who's got his hand raised and would like to speak. Mr. Evler, are you speaking as an individual or on behalf of a group?
On behalf of a group of property owners at 3720 Maryland Avenue, Antique Depot. I kind of got in late to the meeting, I'm not sure what's been discussed or talked about, but question from me to whomever it may concern is about Antique Depot and surroundings, I know Phoenix Airport was scheduled to be removed and whatnot and how that's going to affect our business and property and so on and so forth.
So Mr. Evler, just to, just to clarify, this was explained earlier in the meeting, but the, the purpose of this public hearing is to, is to get comments from the, the public, but we, we won't be having a question and answer session as part of this hearing.
Oh, okay. Okay, very good.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? If so, please just, you can use the hand raise button on your WebEx and we can, we can unmute you to speak. Looks like we have a new person requesting to speak, Mr. Hurwitz. Mr. Hurwitz, are you speaking as an individual or on behalf of a group? And if you could please...
Speaking again myself. Since Mr. Lovelace said, I'm surprised how no one's here. My previous comments, I guess, the underlying them goes to the lack of engineering and I'm not sure what the Core is being asked to approve in regard to how the culvert area is going to work or the tunnel access at Lot F. Because without some of that concept, as I said, of how it's going to interact with the park and how it's not going to be having this cold wind blowing through on certain days, how you can keep the cars from falling off from Maryland Avenue, how you're going to protect the BNO when the flow is going to change. And as I said, why are we tearing down the Phoenix over the Tiber which is not really impacting and from looking at pictures and my understanding, doesn't flood all that badly as it was now. It was only a few feet apparently. And regarding Lot F, no one's ever explained how you're going to build the access to the tunnel. To me, the topography there is, once the water's already there, you're already got a problem and to get enough water into it, you have a huge problem because, as I said, Lot F is so flat, so without some of that engineering, as I said, I don't understand how the Core is approving this or, or even how this is all one permit process for all these different independent projects. So I would hope you would get those answers from the county before proceeding on those details. And since there's no one here, I wonder who many people are actually using your sign language interpreter. Maybe they'll watch later.
Thank you, Mr. Hurwitz. Is there anybody else who would like to, to speak? Well, at this point, we have just, just over 15 minutes left for the hearing, so I'd say let's, I recommend we just stay on the line until 9. And if there is anybody who wishes to speak, please just use the, the good old hand raise button It's now nine o'clock. On behalf of all of us with the Corps and MDE, we would like to thank you for your participation in this public hearing. Your comments are important to us and we will review them carefully to ensure our final decision accurately evaluates the project alternatives and their environmental impacts. Again, the Corps and MDE will carefully consider all comments provided at this public hearing for the proposed project as part of our final permit decision. As another reminder, if you would like to provide additional comments, the close of the public comment period is September 25, 2020. Comments must be received by September 25, 2020 to be considered in the Corps evaluation of the proposed project. In addition, the transcript from this public hearing will be posted to the link provided in the public notice. You may also request a paper copy of the public notice and/or transcript by sending a request via email to Mr. Donald Bowle. And here I'll spell out Don's email address. It's B-O-N-A-L-D dot R as in Robert, dot B-O-L-E at U-S-A-C-E dot A-R-M-Y dot M-I-L. Or you can also call Don at 410-962-6079. Thank you and have a good evening.